Because you said she wasn't going to be until seven thirty, so I figured if we got this other stuff, then we could just get out of here once she's done.
Yeah, they had it.
Bill set.
All right, so, welcome to the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen zoning board of appeals meeting. We'll start with our, on the agenda, we will start with the update on Sajagardens' cost certification review. As we did during the last meeting, we have town CPA Denise Catabo with us this evening. So, maybe with that Denise, I'll give you the floor and we can go from there.
Sure, thank you. So, at your request, I went back out to Mr. Ali's office and spent about seven hours there going through various invoices. The first thing when I got there, we addressed the situation with the cost of the land, which I brought up last time, that I felt was wrong on the forty B. And what he did is, he produced this document, which I just gave you a copy of, which is a purchase and sale of agreement between Crescent Builders and Sajagardens. And you'll note that this is only for six point eight seven acres for the eight hundred thousand, and he's saying that's why it should be eight hundred in the forty B. I still disagree because this has never, ever been recorded in the registry of deeds. Though what has been recorded in the registry of deeds, and this is dated March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the registry of deeds has a document, a quick claim deed, between Crescent Builders and Sajagardens for the property that is granted by the deed of Barry Savings Bank, which was the nine point eight two acres. And that was recorded on July fifteenth, fourteenth of two thousand and fifteen, in which Mr. Ali signed that quick claim deed. So that was after this. So if this was supposed to be the true cost of the land, this would have been recorded and then everything would be copacetic. So I still hold that the value of the land is incorrect because it still includes the property in the front, the three-family home. So again, I think that needs to be apportioned and the land should be less regardless of the fact, because this was never recorded. And what was recorded happened after this document and Mr. Ali signed that one. So if, he wouldn't have signed that had this been correct, in my eyes, anyway.
Well, if this wasn't recorded, this is a meaningless document. I mean, this is a purchase of land that needs to be recorded, so...
Right, and I explained to him that according to the town records, Sajagardens is the one that owns that three-family in front.
Right.
What I did find, I asked for real estate tax bills, I received the last two years of bills, and the last two years of real estate tax bills for that home have been paid by another entity that Mr. Ali owns. So he has been paying that separately because he considers that part of a separate entity, even though that entity does not own that property according to the town records.
When you say that property, which property?
The three-family out front. When he bought that property, it came with the three-family home out front.
Has there been any, any action to divide the property?
Yes, you guys out, well, what you guys did is you allowed him, one property's now ninety-two Main, North, Main Street and the forty B project is ninety-four or vice versa. One's ninety-four, one's ninety-two.
We allowed that, but has that been recorded in the registry of deeds that there is now two properties?
That I can't tell you, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we did it, we did it in A and R.
But...
Yeah, that's all well and good, but if it wasn't recorded in the registry of deeds, it's one plot.
Okay, did you, did you happen to look at the property card for these properties?
I, what I had done is, when I was looking to try to determine who owned, I went to the assessor's webs, your town assessor's website.
Yep.
And that's how I figured out who still owned the three, the three-family home in the front. I pulled these, these, I guess what you would call property cards. And it indicates that Sajagardens owns the three family.
Right.
Yeah.
And it looks like, and according to this property card, it looks like he sold the property and the house from Crescent Builders to Sajagardens for a hundred dollars.
Right, exactly, that's what the quick claim deed is, which is July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Right.
It looks like, as far as I can see, is that for fiscal year nineteen, on ninety-two North Main Street, he paid, which is the forty B project?
Yeah.
He paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents for taxes. And on ninety-two, he paid, I think it was, I think it was something like seven thou- nine, seven thousand something, I think it was, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
But that came out of a different company.
No, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying, well, actually, it's listed, the recorded owner for both properties is Sajagardens.
I know, I know, but for some reason, he, he, he feels, I've informed him what the town records show, and I've let him know that. And I also told him that I don't consider this a viable document because of the fact that was never recorded. But I just wanted to let you know that that was our first discussion when we met, was the value of the land. So that's up to you as to how you want to handle that. My suggestion would be that that's the incorrect value listed on the forty B. I then proceeded to ask for various vendor invoices, and then I compared those vendor invoices to the general ledger that had been provided to us. And I, I found it extremely challenging. And the reason why I say that is because there are multiple companies working out of one office at one location. So there can be as many as three to four companies working out of one location. So the invoices might come in, addressed to a different company that he owns, but shipped to that address. So you might have an invoice from National Lumber to a different entity, but it's shipped to that address. So you have, you can't assume that it didn't go into the construction of that property any more than I can assume it went somewhere else. I did, didn't, again, because of cost limitations and timeframe, I didn't go through every single lumber bill, I flipped through a couple. I did find some very small invoices being shipped to Main Street in Oxford, Thirteenth Dartmouth Street in Worcester, Holden Street in Newton, Holden Street in Newton, but they were all very small bills. And that was just me flipping really quick, it wasn't me going invoice by invoice by invoice. I didn't look through every single invoice. Those, those small ones were mixed in with the other ones. I don't assume that those, and I just assumed that those didn't have anything to do with this project because of the ship-to date, where, where the product was shipped to.
So that eight hundred thousand dollars that was billed from National Lumber, we have no idea how much of that is actually for this forty B project?
Well, he did have invoices from National Lumber, he did have backup to them, and, and the majority of them, I, for the ones I looked at, said shipped to this address, ninety-four Main Street. All I'm saying is...
But those are, those are documents that the original accountant, when he was doing the cost certification...
He didn't get any of those documents, he just got a, a note from National Lumber saying two million dollars or something was spent.
How do you, how do you justify that? I mean, that eight hundred thousand dollars, that could be like ten different projects. But I mean, if you, if you, if, I know that when you're ordering stuff from one company, you have to put down, be specific on what documents, you know, what's going to each, each entity, not just one bill for eight hundred thousand dollars and just say, oh yeah...
Well, he did have a bunch of bills, understand, he paid, he didn't pay National Lumber one large sum, he kept paying and paying and paying.
But the thing is, is that when the CPA did the cost certification, he didn't have tho, he should have, in my personal opinion, he should have had those to show that, okay, yeah, he had eight hundred thousand dollars from National Lumber. How much of that eight hundred thousand was actually for ninety-four North Main Street?
Yeah, well, again, because, because some of it was, it came through from one of his other entities, but the ship-to date was to this one, so I assumed it went to that project. And I would have to say that most of the ones I looked at were fine, they, they went to that pro, that went to that address were fine. I reviewed a lot of the, like, I picked various vendors, the supply bills and vendor bills, and I found that most of, like, I looked at, it's hard because you, so I looked at rough plum and, 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 rough plum and then finished plum, and determined was eighty, were there eighty units of charges, you know, charges for eighty units, and I found that to be true. I looked at, the person that did most of the electrical was a very, very professional-type company, and they were very specific with all their bills. And you could dot the i's and cross the t's, and they had change orders, they had bills, they were very, very thorough. So I had no issue with that.
That's the electric company?
Yeah. And I did ask for, there was one vendor I asked for, he could not produce the invoices for this particular vendor. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven invoices paid to this vendor totaling thirteen thousand dollars. And he couldn't produce any invoices for me for that vendor.
Okay, and as far as the electrician, you said that the last time, your proposal was four thirty-two, but they were actually paid four sixty, four si, four, uh, six forty-four. So you were able to come up with...
Uh, yeah, they were, like I said, they were very, very, very thorough, all the dotting, all the i's crossing, all the t's with all their invoices.
Okay, what about the two twenty-five for the countertop company?
That company could still, I, actually, that company got paid close to three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, including that two fifty-five. There were no invoices for that company.
So we don't know if that was for that project or whatever?
Right, what I can say is that some of the invoices matched, so there were, there were other people that were doing the kitchen installs at like, say, five hundred bucks a kitchen. This guy would do like a two thousand dollar invoice, so that would make sense, that's for kitchens. So he was charging about the same as the other vendor that was doing the kitchen installs. He explained to me that this particular gentleman provided all the granite countertops for the entire complex. And that would explain the large check for the two fifty-five, there was another check for sixty-one thousand, another check for twelve thousand, I have to believe that all of those types of checks were for granite countertops. And that the small checks made out to this individual was for the kitchen installs. But there were absolutely no invoices for that particular gentleman. Mr. Ali did offer to call him and ask him for invoices, which I think at this point is moot because they should have already been in his files. So I told him that not to bother. But he did offer, I want to make that clear, he offered to call him.
Did you have any luck contacting the CPA that did the original cost?
I didn't contact him back again. He called me when I had requested another appointment at Mr. Ali's office to review the invoices, and he had just, you know, inquired as to why he, I needed to look at the invoices. That was it.
This is the CPA...
Who did the forty B review.
That Booth, Booton Company or whatever that name of it is?
I looked at five American Expresses, again, where, in bills, it, it's the same as other things in that there's multiple companies with one account. So the bookkeeper, I thought, was very thorough, she would highlight it and go through and subtotal one bill into the different entities and tell each, what each entity owed for a particular bill. What I did find in two out of the five situations that I found was that there was fifteen thousand, in one case, expenses belonging to one of the other entities was paid by Sajagardens and because, I guess, I don't know what the situation was, but fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars was paid more than the EMX bill had allocated to Sajagardens as being their portion of the bill. So their portion of the bill might be two hundred and ninety-two dollars, they paid three hundred and ten for some reason. So there was an extra fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars paid by Sajagardens. It was not, I, I thought the fifteen thousand, I was led to believe that the fifteen thousand forty-three was put against Mr. Ali's equity account, it was not, it was put in, under miscellaneous expense. And in another bill, I also found an excess being paid of twelve thousand five hundred and twenty dollars of expenses belonging to other entities that was paid by Sajagardens.
Was Mr. Ali able to explain any of this?
I didn't talk to him about this, particular thing that I found, I just was going through the invoices. So it, that totaled twenty-eight thousand dollars of excess expenses that was put into miscellaneous expense that belonged to other properties.
So that's, that's seven...
None of this is major money, it's, it's small money when you look at this whole project, you know what I'm saying, that's, that's the issue. You're looking at, you know, you're looking at a multi-million dollar project, a seven million dollar project, twenty-eight thousand, yeah, is it wrong, yes. You know, is it going to make a huge difference? No.
Were you able to get any more of the QuickBooks?
No, I used the QuickBooks I had, I didn't ask them again for the QuickBooks file, I used what I had.
In your past experience, is that a common thing or not a common thing? For them not to give, not to give you a QuickBooks?
It, it depends, sometimes, I haven't had that experience, I usually get the QuickBooks file, but some people, that's, I mean, that, I can work with it or work without it. I mean, I had other people that didn't know, I, my, I take that back, on another forty B project, that's all I had to work with was the QuickBooks, I couldn't get the actual, they did, like, provided me a printout, like, I couldn't get the actual file. Because again, that was a multiple entity type of thing, and they were trying to limit what I saw, which was fine because I had nothing to do with the other entities they were involved in, so that's fine. I reviewed things like Percy's, where you, he acquired all the, his, his appliances. So, I know, this, I mean, this is just being, I know how petty this is, but I'm, I'm just trying to check things. So I'm looking at the number of refrigerators, the number of ice makers, the number of microwaves, the number of dishwashers, the number of ranges, you know, all that kind of thing, were there eighty, you know what I'm saying? And what I found was that, I guess some dishwashers were stolen or something, so he had to buy five more, so I'm not sure about that. But I had like eleven more microwaves than what I should have had. That's sixteen hundred bucks, I mean, it's not a big deal. And, and one of them went in his office, his office has a finished kitchen in there. So his, his office is, that they operate out of, has a finished kitchen. So that's the other thing, so you have, you know, the bills relating to that particular unit, it's probably within all this stuff here, which isn't a big deal, it's just that unit. So other than that, they all tied out. I looked at a bunch of other stuff having to do with, let me just tell you which other ones I, I, so the other, some of the invoices I looked at, there were some invoices, not all of them in a folder. So I would pick a vendor, and the vendor in the general ledger had numerous checks, and I could find like half of them, half of the invoices in the folder, the other half I couldn't find. So they were incomplete, I couldn't find to check. There were other ones that I was told last time, that the accountant indicated that the vendor didn't provide any invoices, I was told there were no invoices, when I went back this time, there were invoices. And I did notice that, that they, the person had provided him, would, would, he was paying this per, this company by man-hours. So it would list all the men that worked for this company, it would list the day they worked, it would list a description of what they did, and then it would list their rate, and he would pay them for that particular day. So there were invoices like that, but they didn't come nearly to total what was paid by that, to that particular vendor. So I didn't find anything major or anything, yes, there was discrepancies here and there, but overall, there isn't, I don't think, a huge amount that can be done. I mean, I got twenty-eight thousand in EMX, I got thirteen thousand to a vendor, I can't, can't confirm one way or another, I got other vendors I can't confirm. I mean, what do you do when someone doesn't produce invoices?
It just, it just kind of strikes me as odd is that, you know, the information that you provided to us last month and now the information that you've got this month, it just kind of bothers me that the CPA that did the original cert, cost certification wasn't able to get these records, you know? Or ascertain information about, okay, you got a bill here for eight hundred thousand dollars from National Lumber, how much is that is for this project? You know, I mean, I know that you're, that they shipping everything to, to one location, but you have to have an invoice for every job that you're doing. How, how do you bill? So, you know, it really kind, comes down to questioning, you know, the person that did this, the CPA that did this, the original. It just seems like they didn't do us a just, any justice, you know, from my point of view. Just from my point of view. I mean, it just, I, I don't understand, I don't know where, how the rest of the board feels, but I don't know what MHP's going to do, but, I mean, if the board has to sign something to verify all this, I'm sorry, but I can't sign any of this. I, I think that MHP, let them deal with the headache.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know that we have to sign anything.
Well, we have to, we have to sign off on it.
Well, it wasn't my understanding, my understanding was, we only cite error, what we think are errors in MHP then makes the decision.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So what is the meaning of the eight hundred thousand dollars, like, what is the significance of that? I understand you, you think it's wrong, but...
That's the cost of the land included in the forty B analysis, and my point...
And you think it should be significantly higher?
No, significantly lower.
Okay, why do you think it should be significantly lower?
Because it includes the three family. When he bought that property, he bought it as one piece of property.
What did he pay Barry Savings for it?
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
And now that's been divided into two...
Properties, correct.
Oh, well, that seems clear as day, though.
And according to the property card, he sold the property with the house on it for a hundred dollars. He sold it for...
Yeah, but for, he sold it for himself, you know?
I understand that, but, but he's, so...
Normally they, they, you know, when you want to change the deed, you sell it for one dollar, a hundred dollars, so that's, you know...
But there is no deed.
No, 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 the ninety-four North Main Street is the house, the front house.
No, I understand that, but it sounds like we don't have any recorded deed showing that that, that was actually changed hands.
We do, we have, we have, we have a quick claim deed.
On the ninety...
Dated from, from Crescent Builders to Sajagardens on July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Is it for ninety-two, the, the forty-four B or the front building?
It's, it's for the whole, the whole property.
Whole, whole property.
Because they refer, what I say, what I say is, it refers to the same property as transferred by Barry Savings Bank. And Barry Savings Bank's deed was for nine point eight seven acres.
Yeah.
And, and the way the quick claim deed reads, it says being the same premises granted to the grantors by deed of Barry Savings Bank. So that's why it's got to be the same property.
Okay, so it went from Barry Savings to Crescent Builders?
Crescent Builders.
Then it's Sajagardens.
Then Crescent Builders sold it to Sajagardens?
Correct.
And he's claiming Crescent Builders sold it to Sajagardens for eight hundred thousand?
Correct.
But, and he's claiming that did not include the house in front?
Correct.
But the way it's written is...
Well, that's, that's this piece of prop, that's this pianist that was never recorded.
Meaningless, in my opinion. So he's, so he's saying this document is the transfer of the property from...
Well, this is the one he, is this the one I gave you tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what he said to me is why the, the forty B should be valued at eight hundred thousand because of this piece of, this, this property, because of this document. And my point was no, that it, I had to go by what was in the registry of deeds.
And as far as you know, nothing in the registry of deeds has divided that, those two plots.
Right, I'm going by what was in, recorded on July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen was, was, was what I have for records.
And what is it that you have in July two thousand and fifteen, what does it say?
It says that Crescent Builders grants to Sajagardens the quick claim covenant being, and then the, the, saying, being the same premises granted to the grantors by deed of Barry Savings Bank.
And that was after this document?
Correct.
So that as being recorded, if we trace it backwards, if I were, and if the town, for tax purposes, was to assess taxes on, on that document, that deed indicates that whatever Barry Savings gave to Crescent Builders...
Which is right here.
Is what went to Sajagardens.
Right, so on the quick claim deed from Barry Savings Bank to Crescent Builders is dated January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, and that was for nine point eight two acres.
Now, it's for the whole property.
And do you know if our town assessor's office has, treats these as separate, separate?
They, they, they do, they treat them as two, but they both show as being owned by Sajagardens. There's two different properties and they show them both being owned by Sajagardens.
Does Sajagardens have owned any property other than this, this piece of land?
Not to my knowledge.
My understanding was, and it, you know, doesn't have to be the case, but that it was formed for the purposes of this, this project.
That's typically how it works with forty Bs, you form a separate entity for the forty B.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's the one... Raj, when you, when, when the planning board does an A and R, right, doesn't that A and R have to be recorded with the registry of deeds?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we did an A and R for him to split up ninety-two and ninety-four, okay? So that A and R, which, which is for the house and that property, that should have been recorded at the registry of deeds. Correct?
Yeah, that's what we don't know, I think, right, we don't know.
We don't know whether they hit a cottage.
So we don't know if, so the A and, when we did the A and R to split up the two properties, one was the six, one was for the six point something, the other one was for the rest, that's when the one, the one for the house, okay? We don't know if that was ever, if that A and R was ever recorded at the registry of deeds.
That I can't tell you, no. I can just go, I'm just looking at your assessor's records as to who the owners of each property are.
But the assessors are treating it differently, so we're...
The assessors are treating it as both properties, the three family...
Right.
And the forty, and the forty B project is being owned by Sajagardens.
Right, but they're, but they're...
That's who their tax bills go to.
But they're considering them two separate plots.
Correct, ninety-two, one's ninety-two and one's ninety-four.
So as far as our assessors are concerned, and as far as what he's paying taxes on, he's paying taxes on a smaller piece of land than what was sold for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
He's paying two different taxes.
Right, no, but, but the ninety, was it ninety-two or ninety-four?
Ninety, ninety-two.
Ninety-two, ninety-four. So ninety-two North Main Street, the forty B project?
Yeah.
That apartment complex?
Yeah.
That's ninety-four.
What is it, ninety-four?
Ninety-two, ninety-two.
So the apartment complex is ninety-two.
Right.
The whole thing was, the whole plot of land was initially sold by Barry Savings to Crescent Builders.
Correct.
For eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
He then divided, at least he's, as far as, as far as our assessors are concerned, he divided these into two plots...
After the fact.
After the fact, so it was bought by, Crescent buys it, pays eight hundred thousand dollars. After the fact, these properties, as far as the assessors are concerned, split into two distinct properties.
Right, even after construction started, though, construction started before they were split.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that that matters.
Okay.
So we have a piece of, we have a giant piece of property that costs eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, a smaller subset of that eight hundred thousand dollar property is what the forty B project is built on.
Well, a larger subset, yeah.
Yes, but it is a smaller set than the, than the, so we...
Right.
The whole thing, we'll call A.
Yep.
A was divided and is now B and C.
Correct.
B is the big chunk.
Correct.
C is the small chunk.
Yep.
But B is smaller than A.
Correct.
So A was purchased for eight hundred thousand, B is now a smaller portion of, of A...
Correct.
But he's claiming B is the same value as A?
Yes. Well, that's what the forty B report shows.
Right, well, and, so...
He's not claiming that, that's what the forty B report is showing. And he felt that that was the correct price.
Okay, but he is the one who's doing the forty Bs, so how is this not him claiming it?
Right, yeah, you're, right, I guess, yes, okay.
He is the principal behind both Crescent Builders and Sajagardens, so...
Correct, correct, yes, he's claiming it, okay.
You can call it, he can, no matter how many corporations you form, it's still him at the end of the day. So at the end of the day, B, which is smaller than A, which was the eight hundred thousand dollars, he's saying, for the cost certification purposes, we should use the eight hundred thousand dollars of A, even though the property that he has the forty B on is B, in C, he could do Sajagardens, could do whatever the heck they want with it, not subject to any of the forty B requirements.
Correct.
That seems clear as day that this should not be valued at eight hundred thousand dollars, and that needs to be brought up to...
But like I said, according, on, on this, on the property card, it shows that Crescent Builders sold ninety-two North Main Street...
Right, it doesn't matter what they sold... Right, it doesn't matter what they sold. They, we can agree that they sold it, hypothetically, we could agree that they sold it.
Right.
But regardless of whether it was sold or it wasn't sold, he's claiming eight hun- the full eight hundred thousand dollar value to what I'm calling B. Whether it was sold or not sold is irrelevant. The property cost eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, he continues to claim that this was an eight hundred thousand dollar cost incurred as part of the forty B project, even though he sold off, he can sell it off for a dollar, but he didn't sell it off at fair market value. So, he's saying it cost eight hundred thousand dollars, but really, he sold it off to himself, to the same corporation at, for a dollar, but could turn around tomorrow and sell that for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in which case, the actual value that should be assessed, I'm just throwing two hundred and fifty as a random number, random, but then the actual value should be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this.
That's my point.
I think that's something we have to bring to the- And this is, this wasn't recorded, so... And frankly, even if it was recorded, I'm not sure it makes a difference. It was, it, it, as far as we know, it wasn't recorded, but even if it was recorded-
Well, he told me it wasn't recorded. He's, he's the one that told me it wasn't recorded, and-
Wasn't?
This, this one wasn't. The one that I gave you tonight was not recorded. And the fact, again, that the town, I was going by the most recent town records to try to figure out, was it, you know, was that three family sold to a different property? And I'm just going by what your assessor's office shows, which is that Sajja Gardens still owns that three family.
But I think even if, even if this was true, that this document was an accurate document, it's not a fair representation of the cost incurred in this forty B. He can call it, say eight hundred thousand dollars all he wants, but the reality is the property is not the same eight, property that was sold for eight hundred thousand dollars.
This, the cost certification that, that, what's his name, that company did, they have to put on the cost certification, if I under- if I understand it correctly, they have to put down what the value of the property was, or what the property was bought for. Just the forty B property, is that correct?
Well, the four, right, what, what should be on the cost certification is the cost of the land for the forty B. I mean, the forty B project should represent what the cost of the land is. Usually there, and, and I believe the state did evaluation, which the state, when I talked to the gentleman from the state, he didn't have it handy in, in, you could ask him to look it up. But my understanding is the state did evaluation of the property back in December two thousand thirteen, before the project started. But he wouldn't tell me-
Excuse me, what was the date?
In December of two thousand thirteen, the state did a valuation of the property. But he couldn't tell me what was in that valuation, or what the valuation amount was for.
When they, when he, when he says the state?
That is, that is State of Massachusetts, MHP.
So, when they were foreclosing.
M, MHP did evaluation.
Okay, so we should, so MHP should have in some kind of documentation to say what the value of the property was for the forty B project.
Well, I was trying to find out from MHP if it included, if it was all nine point eight two acres or just the six point eight two acres. And they couldn't answer my question at the time.
I mean, one way, one way or another, it's wrong. Because if it's, if it, if it continues to be nine point two acres and the assessor's just treating it as separate because the assessor's got it wrong or whatever, then it's true that this is, that he's accurately stated it was eight hundred thousand dollars, but that's still illegal fiction because part of this forty-two, forty-two B plot of land, the nine point two acres, part of that is not a forty, is not part of the forty B. Part of that is the three family home, which is separate and distinct and not-
And you're getting twenty, twenty-four hundred dollars a month rent for each of those apartments. I, I would think somewhere around there, so I would think they're, that house-
It's not subject to any of the forty B covenants.
And the house has a value to it.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
The house has a value, but it has nothing to do with the forty B project.
Correct, correct.
Because we A and R'd it. So, it's two, it's actually two separate properties.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what we're trying to find out now, and MHP should have this information, they should know that he A and R'd that property, and it's two separate properties. They should have, and there should be something on this, because I know, I looked at another cost certification on another project that he did, and it shows what the value of the property was, you know. So, the valuation is not eight hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's less than that. There should be two assessments, there should be an assessment for the, for the six point two, three acres of land, and then another assessment for, so that eight hundred thousand should be split up. It should be like five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand for the six point something acres and two or three thou- hundred thousand for the other property.
I, yeah, I think, I think a discussion with MHP would be, would be wise in that situation, that you have an issue with the cost valuation on the land. And then, I guess, when you're talking to them, I, you could also ask them, what's the typical procedure for MHP when somebody can't produce invoices for expenses related to the property? What, what, what's the position they normally take? Do they just say, okay, that's fine? Or do they subtract those expenses? What do they do?
So, Mr. Chair, that's-
I mean, again, I, I got a lot of invoices. I went through, I used the general ledger, I tied out, like, I looked at concrete invoices, I looked at New England Fire Systems, they all tied out. I looked at, there was a couple of, another concrete company I couldn't find any invoices for. But that he used several of them, some of them he had invoices for, some he didn't. And, and, and I looked at some American Expresses, I looked at equipment rental, I looked at some National Lumber bills, I looked at some Home Depot bills, I looked at various bills, but I, paint, painting bills, plumbers' bills, electrician bills. But again, I'm limited by time and cost and things like that, so I'm not going to sit there and go through every single bill.
So, as far, as far as the National Lumber, let's, because that seems to be the big, the-
That one there, like I said, what I found was minimal. It was like maybe a thousand bucks altogether shipped to other addresses when I was flipping through really quickly.
But we don't have, we don't have any, we don't have any, any documentation to show that.
Yeah, it was, he had, he had the, he had the invoice with all the yellow slips underneath it. And all the yellow slips had ship to address being this property, ninety-four.
Okay, I understand that, but what I'm saying though is, is we don't know how much of that was actually, just because it's shipped to one location, doesn't mean it's for that job.
I know, but I, I guess you've got to kind of assume it, because obviously, there's a building standing there, there's stuff there. I mean, this is where you run into a problem when you have one location with multiple, multiple entities operating out of that one location.
And those entities are doing buildings in other locations, so-
Yeah, but, you know, what I-
It wouldn't make sense to ship lumber to, to this address when, and, and, and what's he going to do? Load it on a truck and ship it from here to shosh gosh at another location? It wouldn't make any sense. Small stuff, maybe.
Yes.
A faucet or something like that, it would make sense to just ship everything here and somebody grabs the faucet and bring it to another thing, so.
Again, and also, you know, he's building this building in a particular way. So, the microwave oven or the refrigerators, those are set for this kind of buildings. He won't be taking that to another place.
Could be, if he, if that's, if, if his projects are similar and he's determined that it's cost effective to buy Model A Whirlpool dishwashers and everything he does comes with a Model A Whirlpool dishwasher.
Yeah, but even if, even if, okay, he bought like, we'll say eighty stoves from Pe- from Percy's, okay? Or say he bought a hundred and fifty stoves from Percy's, okay? We know that eighty of them were going to go to, to the forty B. So, he should have a separate invoice showing that, okay, I did buy a hundred and fifty, because if I buy that more than so many, I can get a discount. But eighty of those have to go to this project, so he should have some kind of documentation to show that eighty of those went to this project, the other seventy are for whatever else project.
Well, he did, so, like Percy's would say like thirty-two garbage disposals, and the next invoice would say fourteen garbage disposals, and the next invoice would say sixteen garbage disposals. So, that's what I was doing, I was going by invoice by invoice and adding them up. So, there was eighty-one garbage disposals, which totally makes sense because he has an, a kitchen in the office that he's working in.
And he also has a kitchen in the, in the big room.
Okay, so there you go, so it might have been in there then. And then, like, at one point, I was questioning one of the people that was doing some work. I don't know if it was a painter or something, and I says, well, I got eighty-three B rooms being painted, not eighty. Well, there's a yoga room, there's a something else room, so he could justify the extra three rooms. So, when I asked questions, he gave me answers, and they made sense, so that made sense. So, there were like eighty-one garbage disposals, you know, that type of thing. And again, like I said, their dishwashers, their, extra dishwashers, because five had gotten stolen and they had to replace them, so that made sense, so.
But the big one that is potentially, potentially a couple hundred thousand dollars, if not more, is the property?
Yes, the valuation of the land itself, correct. And that's what I'm saying, it was a seven million or multimillion dollar project. My, the issue comes in is what I was finding in the scheme of things, you know, twenty-eight thousand worth of American Express bills that belong to other entities or whatever, when you add them up, they're small in scale compared to the overall size of the project.
Although, if those small ones added up to another hundred grand, and then we're looking at, you know, two hundred and fifty grand for the way the property was divided, you know, now we're looking at like three hundred grand.
Yeah, but, you know, he, he is a, he knows, he does, he did, he's an experienced builder. He knows how to keep the books. But it's so clear, you know, it looks like, you know, his bookkeeping is not up to the level.
Well, I think they have, the bookkeeper does a really good job. The problem is, is, is getting invoices from vendors and, or not paying vendors till you get an invoice.
Yeah, but then, if you don't get an invoice, how can you pay it, right? You need, you need to get the invoice to pay for it.
Yeah, you're right.
So, if you miss one invoice, you can call them and keep it in the book, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You can call them and replace it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we don't, we don't even know if MHP even knows that the land was divided?
Um, I seem to got the, no, I don't know if they know the land was divided.
Because if they're, if they're saying that, that it's eight hundred thousand dollars, then they're talking, then they're, they're assuming that that whole nine point whatever acres of land is the whole forty, is the forty B project, which in fact, it isn't. So, that would be something that, when you contact V, MHP, is to say, do you realize that the property was divided? That the ZBA did A and R, it's two separate properties.
Right.
He can't claim that that, that that six point two, three acres of land is eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not.
Yeah.
There has to be an evaluation for that, am I correct, John?
Uh, that's the way I see it.
Yeah.
Is there a specific format in which we have to notify MHP of our, how do they phrase it? They, I don't think they use the word objections.
I think they're looking for comments and-
I know that the last time I looked at a cost certification for Afra Terrace, it showed on there how much he paid for the land.
Concerns.
Which was forty B project, okay? I understand that he paid eight hundred thousand dollars for the total property, okay? But then, like I said, we divided that property into two properties, okay? So, when he did that, there should be an adjustment of what is called, what the land is assessed for, a cost for the six point three, two, three acres of land, and what the land for the house is. So, basically, MHP, if they know that the land has been divided, they should have a figure for that, just for the land that the forty B project is on. If they're still using the eight hundred thousand, that's wrong, and they need to know that. I, I, the only thing-
And we may want it wrong.
The only thing I can say is, is that somehow, I don't know how we go about it, but we're going to have to contact the MHP and, you know, tell them that, you know, we had our own CPA look at it, these are the, and we still have questions. John has question, and I have question, and basically, the same question is the evaluation of the property. And they need to know, they, we need to find out from them. Do they know that the property has been divided? That the whole nine point whatever acres of land is not- The nine point something acres of land is not the whole forty B project. And if that's the case, then there has to be two separate assessments of the land. They, they've got to justify it. Because it has to be on the CPA, it has to be on this cost certification.
Yeah, I think that's sort of concern one that we can raise with MHP when we get back to them, is this issue of the eight hundred thousand. Are they aware that there are two pieces of land? As you mentioned, in either case, it, it appears that that's not accurate. So, you know, at least raise that as an issue for them, and, and that it appears that the, the valuation for the land, in any event, doesn't appear to be, to be accurate. That there's, there's a discrepancy there that they need to be aware of and that they need to include in their, you know, what do they say here, their final determination.
And also, on her point, as far as, you know, invoices and stuff, okay? I, I'm still trying to boggle my mind with this, you know, this eight hundred thousand dollar bill from National Lumber.
Well, it isn't National Lumber bills. National Lumber bills were over two million.
Over two million.
Not eight hundred thousand, but that two million, according to the other account, the, the accountant that had done it, they got a letter from National Lumber, and National Lumber had indicated that that two million included other properties.
But they can't tell us how much of that two million is actually for this, for the forty B project?
Well, I could go through and add them all up. I mean, I could go through and add up all the invoices for National Lumber, which I didn't do. But like I said, he had all the yellow slips. You know what I'm saying? Have, you know, when you go to the lumberyard and you collect all the slips, and then they send you one invoice at the end of the month with all the yellow slips in back. And like I said, I flipped through them and just checked the ship to, ship to addresses and ninety-nine point nine percent were all coming here to, to this address, ninety-four.
Yeah, see, but that doesn't, that tells me nothing. It doesn't, all it tells me is that he ordered a bunch, he ordered a bunch of stuff, it all went to one address, but he can't testify how much of it was actually used for this project.
But we cannot say it went to other projects too.
Right, you can't, that, that's, that's the, that's the-
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, he should be providing that information to, to the CPA.
So, that's what he did.
He did, he provided that, that's what he did, he provided me the invoices. And when I looked at the invoices, you know what I'm saying? The, the ship to date was that address. I can't prove it one way or the other, and, and nobody can. So, you have to assume that it went to that project.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just explain one thing to me, okay? And when you were here the last time, it's, in our minutes, it says that you reviewed the invoices of the note that states two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars was paid to a countertop company that said work being done in exchange with Crescent Builders. You explained that Crescent Builders agreed to build a house for the owner of this company, the down payment for the house was two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The general ledger, there was an entry for two hundred twenty-five thousand under quote-unquote countertops, and there were no corresponding invoices, and the offset was Mr. Ali's equity. So, has that been resolved?
No, there is still, that just remains as is, there are no invoices from that particular vendor. That vendor received a total of about three hundred, if you include that invoice, about three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for this project altogether. And basically, that's where that stands.
So, Mr. Ali paid him three hundred forty-six thousand dollars?
Ri- right, of which two twenty-five was the down payment on his house, which Mr. Ali credited against his equity account because it had to do with another entity of his.
Yeah, because the house was being built not for the countertop company, but for the owner.
Correct.
And so, taking of the company revenue accounts report was not accessible.
All right.
MHP has a lot of explaining, I mean, they have to explain this.
They don't have to explain anything, but-
Well, they, they need to at least tell us, you know, how, how to deal, because I mean, if they're asking us to review something and to make a-
All MSC is, MHP is asking us is to raise our concerns. They have no obligation back to us. Now, hopefully, they will take our concerns and act upon them, but nothing in this letter indicates that they owe us anything. It just says, provide your comments, um-
We'll go from there.
And then, you know, just they do the right thing.
So, just to be clear, we have received, the latest extension that we received from MHP for responding was the end of July, July thirty-first, which is next Wednesday.
Right, which is what I-
We would have to get back to them by, or in theory, I suppose, if we wanted to, we could request another extension, I don't know that we need to do that.
I think you fulfilled, I mean, I think if you check with your attorney, the town's attorney or whatever, I mean, I think you guys had an obligation to review the report. And then, you had an obligation to say, offer your opinions on it. And by getting back to them and saying you disagree with the cost of the land or whatever, I think you kind of, no offense, fulfilled your responsibility, so you're kind of off the hook.
I think we need to-
It rests with them.
I, I think we should speak to town council though, as far as form. Yes, it says to be in writing, but how specific do we need to be? Do we need to break it down and give- Do we need to break it down and give the history that you've been giving us of? The property was purchased, sold by Barry Savings, nine-point-whatever acres purchased by Crescent Builders. Crescent Builders turned around in so, at eight-hundred thousand dollars, from Barry Savings to Crescent Builders, eight-hundred thousand dollars. Crescent Builders then sold six-point-something acres, well, Crescent Builders made a transfer to Saajah Gardens that says the same property as was transferred by Barry Savings Bank to them, which would be the nine-point-two acres, which is eight-hundred thousand dollars. However, what is actually part of the forty B project, which the cost certification should, should reflect, is a less, is less than nine-point-two acres. It's actually only six-point-something acres.
Six-point-eight-two, yep.
So, six-point-eight-two. So while the, the builder is claiming a forty B cost of eight-hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of nine-point-two acres, the builder has actually only used, has only conveyed six-point-two acres to the entity ultimately doing that. Or maybe the builder conveyed all nine-point-two acres and is incorrectly using the remainder of the, the, the three-point-whatever acres for an unrelated project, which still shouldn't be considered part of the, the, the cost certification.
So he, he made the transfer, right? So is it after the A and R? That's one thing we need to check it. So he did the A and R.
I don't know when the A and R was...
Toby, do you remember when we did the A and R?
That should be in the card.
We should have, we should have that on file, right?
Yes, it's on the minutes. It should be on the minutes. It should be on the, it should be on the agenda too.
When they do, when they do an A and R, when they do an A and R for the planning board, do they have to come back and show you that they went to the registry of deeds?
Nope.
So you don't, so all the A and Rs, you don't know if they ever got registered?
Nope.
Wow. But again, it, it, that, it would make things cleaner, but at the end of the day, it's irrelevant because he's claiming eight-hundred thousand doll, eight-hundred thousand dollars of cost for, which is associated with nine-point-eight-whatever, one-point-eight acres. But in reality, the cost to Saajah Gardens should only be for the valuation of six-point-two acres because Saajah Gardens, whether in law or in fact, has carved out three acres for a different use.
So that we can clearly write it and send it to them, right?
Yeah.
There, there's a document for the town of West Boylston, zoning board of appeals, modification, restated amendment, comprehensive permit issued. And it's regarding the property located at ninety-two North Main Street, formerly ninety-four North Main Street. And it says, date of original ZBA decision, April sixteen, two thousand and four. Date of housing appeal, two thousand and seven. Date of decision, October third, two thousand and eight. And in there, it refers to after separating the property from the existing single-family home on the site, the address of the pro, project is revised to ninety-two North Main Street.
Okay, but that's irrelevant. Cause it's a, that's a whole different, that was from the original. Once Mr. Lever went belly up and Barry Savings Bank took control of the property, it became a whole different issue.
But isn't the restatement, what we did as the, as the board, that, that is not just for, that is the history that's being laid.
Right.
But the restatement was done by this board.
Right, right.
So, so that is a relevant document because that document, the restatement, which, which both parties agreed to, the ZBA and the builder agreed to, apparently states that there was a carving out and created two addresses.
Well, it talks, what bothers me though, is you guys keep referring, this is what, you know, this is the forensic person in me and I apologize because I make things maybe more complicated than they have to be. But here it talks about whereas on February fourth, two thousand and sixteen, the zoning board of appeals for the town of West Boylston issued a restated amendment decision on comprehensive permit issued under GL whatever to Saajah Gardens for the construction of eighty units of rental housing in three buildings on nine-point-eight-two acre parcel located at ninety-fourth Main Street. So you keep referring to the nine-point-eight-two parcel of land when it's only being built on six-point-eight-two acres.
Because at that time, we hadn't done the A and R.
But even, but again, even if, even if we were referring it to, to as nine acres, whether we were wrong or was misstated, ultimately is irrelevant because Saajah Gardens either incorrectly asserted that it was nine acres when it's not nine acres and we signed off saying it was nine acres when it's not nine acres. So either that was a misrepresentation to us that this had been divided, or we jointly made an error on that. But whether it was, whether there was a mistake on one side or the other, or it was a joint mistake, at the end of the day, that is not reality. Reality is it's six acres and three acres and the cost certification should represent the six acres. The fact that we called the nine acres.
There's supposed to be some land. I don't think the house is on three acres.
Well, whatever it is.
There's land in the back too or something.
Yeah, there was some, but regardless, whatever it is, however it breaks down.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a, what it's built on is, is less than the purchased land. And the, what is built, what is, makes up that forty B project is a lesser acreage than what was purchased.
Right.
So to claim that the lesser acreage was, cost eight-hundred thousand dollars and that's a correct cost certification.
That's incorrect. Right. What bothers me is not even, I guess, yes, it's the acreage because I think the house is now on three-quarters of an acre of land or something. But what bothers me is the value of the house itself. Obviously, when you buy a piece of property, that has value. So that's my thing, is that that building is still standing. It's on three-quarters of an acre of land. So you can't just say, well, take nine-point-eight-two and divide it up and set, times that, times the point, the seven...
Oh, absolutely.
Three-quarters of, of the acreage that's left because of the val, if it was just land, I'd say yes. But because there's a house there, I don't think you can do that.
No, certainly not. It's certainly not a simple math problem of the acreage was eight-hundred thousand dollars and then whatever percentage of the acreage is that.
Right.
Um, you know, how to value that house? Is it what the assessors value it at? Is it what fair market value is?
In my past dealing, I know I haven't done apartments. I've done more of with forty B projects. My experience has been more in the area of, um, building houses and selling them and more so than the rental of apartments. But my experience has been when there was a question where there were some very questionable books, to, to put it in the least way, that, um, what they ended up doing was they did use the assessed value at a certain point in time because that was the only way we could get some type of fact in, in, you know, registered fact per se, to apply to the situation. And they used the assessed value.
Do you happen to know what, what that?
What the assessed value of the house, no, I can only tell you what it is today. I, I don't know back then what the assessed...
Do you know what the assessed value of that, of the house is today?
Yeah.
Of ninety-two?
Yeah. Wait a minute, I just had it. Uh, let's see, so price, so the appraised value is four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand three hundred dollars.
So again, whether or not, you know, how, how much we accept that as, as an accurate reflection of the, of the value is...
That's too, yeah, but remember you gotta go back four years, yeah.
So, you know, that's, you know, just, just using it as a simple number, calling it four-hundred thousand. So it may be an accurate statement when, when everybody was calling this nine-point-two acres, that the cost certification should have reflected eight-hundred thousand dollars. When that house was sold, even though it was sold at an arm's length transaction for a dollar, what functionally happened was Saajah Gardens sold a piece of property worth four-hundred thousand dollars. So the cost certification is eight-hundred thousand dollars, but then Saajah Gardens made a four-hundred thousand dollar profit when it sold that to itself, even though it was only sold for a dollar. But now Saajah Gardens' other entity, its non-forty-B aspect, has a piece of property worth four-hundred thousand dollars. So to say that the cost is, is eight-hundred thousand dollars is a misrepresentation because they sold off four-hundred thousand dollars worth of that eight-hundred thousand dollar cost. So that should be deducted and, you know, whether or not the four-hundred thousand dollars is the, is the most accurate number is, is for somebody else to decide. But as it stands, to say in the cost certification that it's eight-hundred thousand dollars using the simple math, well, we paid eight-hundred thousand dollars, but you then sold four-hundred thousand dollars worth of it and you've effectively turned a profit on that. So you're, in the process of building your forty B, you've made some money already. You made four-hundred thousand dollars. And you get all the other associated costs, building and whatnot, but that needs to be accounted for. Because, you know, except selling it for a dollar is, is irrelevant. It's an arms-length transaction. Tomorrow they could go, they could put that on the market and, and get four-hundred thousand theoretically.
Last meeting, the question, I had a question about, um, the profit percentage. And there was a issue about, I know that, that it's, you can make more than twenty percent. And it was stated that that's just on, uh, home ownership, but I was told that that also applies to, um, rentals, apartment rentals. Were you able to find out if it is the...
I'm sorry, I didn't follow through on that. For some reason, my recollection was ten percent on apartment rentals and twenty percent on homes. There was two different calculations. I believe the forty B, if you look at the forty B, he has a percentage there that he's allowed to make. And, um, I think it's, why do I think it's ten percent? Forty B has a calculation, yeah, it's ten percent. So the calculation, the maximum allowable annual dividend is ten percent of the owner's equity, which according to this was seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. So he would...
So he didn't, he made less than ten percent profit?
Well, we're talking per, per year, what after, after rent, after rents. So you look at what he collects and rents, subtracts his expenses and his net profit. So what they're doing is they're comparing his net profit each year to this amount here, is my understanding.
That's another question I have because I don't understand that. Because I know that on home ownership, it's twenty percent and they have to document that in the, uh, because there was a question on Afra Terrace on how much percentage and he made like fourteen or fifteen percent, you know, which is under the twenty percent, okay? Now, if that differs from, home ownership differs from rentals, then we need, I'd like to know...
It does, definitely does.
Okay, I'd like to know how that works and did he go over? Because anytime he goes over the percentage that he's supposed to, then that money comes back to the town.
Right, but that's, my understanding is it's on a yearly comparison.
That's something...
But that's a, that's not a, I, I agree. It's a very good point. It's something we need to look into, but that's...
My point is I go...
Not what we're looking at today.
Right, but the other thing is, I, I guess in, in that retrospect is how do you guys track that? My question to you would be, if this is, if this apartment complex, I believe it's a twenty-year or fifteen-year project type of thing. So my point is over a fifteen-year period, what are you supposed to do? Get a profit and loss from him every year? Like, how do you know what he's making?
I, I, I don't, I don't know what the, that seems like what you'd have to do is that you'd have to have somebody like you every year.
Well, well, my...
Check the books.
Or my question is to you is what's your obligation to ask him? How do you fulfill that obligation? Are you supposed to ask him for financials every year? Have you guys ever had a forty B apartment thing in West Boylston?
This one over here, across the street.
Is that a forty B? Do you get financial statements from that entity each year?
Basically, the way I understand it is, is that the management company on, on the, on the rentals is supposed to, every year, they're supposed to recertify the people that are living there to make sure that their income hasn't gone.
Right.
They're supposed to make, then they're supposed to make a report of if everybody's still living there and if they, you know, and then they send that report, they're supposed to send one to the subsidizing agency and supposedly they should be sending one to the town. We've never gotten one.
That's, that's a question for the, for town council and maybe we, maybe the town needs to start reaching out to whoever the management company is from Freedom Village and say, you have not done the filling.
The other question I had that I'm not familiar with when you have this is, so there's a rental company in there or whatever, management company. So what's their obligation to maintain that management company? Can they just let that management company go and do it on their own now? Because I know in this situation, I think the state wanted the management company there. So after the forty B project's done and approved, what's the obligation?
They're on board for the whole time.
They're on board for the fifteen years?
Yeah, well, this is...
I thought they had to be one of a group of approved management companies.
But what I'm saying is, what's the obligation to keep that management company once the project's done? Can you just get rid of the management company and start renting them yourself?
My understanding is you can't do it on your own. They could get rid of that management company, but they could...
But they'd have to hire another one?
That was approved.
Approved by the state.
Approved by the state. Okay, all right. Okay, that I didn't know.
I, I could be mistaken. That was my understanding.
But I think somewhere along the line, somebody has an obligation to look at financial statements every year to say, okay, here's the approved, see, this is where the costs come in and that's why it's important to understand the cost. Because the cost, that ten percent is, is part of all the costs. So the owner's equity or stuff in there has to do with the total cost of the project. So if the costs are wrong, then that calculated number is wrong, all right? So, um, again, I mean, not, on a seven-million-dollar project, twenty-eight thousand of AMX bills is a drop in the bucket in, in the, in the scheme of things. But what I'm trying to say is that somewhere along the line, somebody has an obligation every year to get financials, whether it's you, the town council or somebody, to compare to see, okay, are we in compliance? Did they exceed our ten percent? Probably never, but at least you've done your due diligence and you found it out.
Right. Somebody needs to make sure, be minding the store of that.
Right, that's all. It's like, you know, you don't want to be dropping the ball somewhere along the line.
Agreed. All right. Now, you said, you did say something last time that, or last month, that something about, um, he got a loan from Middlesex Bank?
Right, and that got paid off in full.
And he got what, seven-point-six, but then he got, then he got another million dollars?
I don't know how that worked. Um, I'm not sure what the, the story was on that, but I believe that to be true, that, that, that the loan was increased somewhere along the line, given how much equity he was putting in.
And we don't have any, we have no, no idea of why the, the extra million dollars was, was...
I, I think it was because of all the, 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 the cost of the project and, and how much he was actually putting in out of his own pocket because he was only required to put in X dollars. So when it exceeded a certain amount, then they, um, gave additional monies. I'm, I'm not totally a hundred percent sure on that one.
Is that something that is relevant to us?
No, I was, no, I don't think so. I, I'm looking at it more as I, in my initial review, I went and looked at the rent, um, jet, rent folders to make sure that the rental company seemed to be in compliance, that they were offering the, you know, if they refused somebody, that the information was in the folder, why they refused somebody, what was the documentation, um, that type of thing. So I don't, I don't think the financing affects you guys whatsoever.
That doesn't seem like that's applicable to the cost certification.
Nope.
I want to make sure we're, tonight at least, focused on the cost certification.
Right.
The one big issue is that, land cost.
That's, that's clearly the big thing. So, so why, why don't I recommend do this and then, again, feel free to, to comment? Why don't, um, if I can work with you actually to start that, just get a little bit of language together describing that valuation of land issue that we have.
Yep.
Then, once we get something in writing together, maybe I can, um, forward it to the attorney that I had been in contact with from the Affordable Housing Trust on this. Get, get him, get his eyes on there, just see if he can just read through that quickly in time to, to submit that.
Yeah, I think it's just like a paragraph long or something. It wouldn't be overly complicated.
Make sure it's clear enough that this loan officer, you know, isn't lost in the woods. Okay, you're saying the numbers aren't right, but not understanding why we're saying the numbers aren't right.
Exactly.
So the one thing I could suggest to you is, you know, maybe we can submit the supporting documents, like when we did the A and R and also the document on the, you know, the property card and also the claim, the original quitclaim document.
Yeah, I have all the quitclaim deeds.
And I think this, we need to be judicious about that because too much creates confusion.
Right.
You know, we wanna, we can always provide more later if, if MHP comes back and says, okay, we got you what you're saying, but we wanna, we want some clarification. And then we can give more records or, or the builder can give more records to, if they want to defend that position. But I wouldn't want to inundate MHP to begin with because they may get lost in, because they weren't privy to this conversation that, you know, gone on for over an hour, go back and forth on this. So if we turn over the A and R and all those different things, then the point may get lost in the deluge of papers, so.
Yeah, but the thing is, the A and R is, is a crucial factor as far as the eight-hundred thousand dollars for the land. Cause if MHP doesn't realize...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't give the A and R. I'm just saying we need to not flood them with papers initially.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, that much flooding. I'm just saying to the point, so when you say, you know, this is a nine acre, they bought it. So we need to say, we need to show the document, number one. Then, you know, we did the A and R on that day. Okay, we saw the quitclaim document, one page, number two. That's it. Okay, we saw the quitclaim document, one page, number two. That's it.
Yeah, okay, that's, I'm not, I'm not-
I'm not saying anymore.
Yeah, I'm not objecting to you giving A and R.
We have to submit the reinstated document and all those things, no.
Yeah, I, I just don't, yeah, that's all I'm saying. I just don't want to overdo it.
So let me ask you this, are you comfortable within that, you know, one paragraph or so that we're talking about explaining this issue, mentioning that there was an A and R that was granted by this board, you know, substantiating the fact that there appears to be two different lots there and that the eight hundred thousand doesn't seem to have changed?
And I think, you know, maybe the assessor's record showing that there's two, that, that nine, that nine acres became a lesser thing.
Yeah.
And-
They are paying-
And it's paying two tax bills.
And, yeah, there's two tax bills, and one of them's, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, so claiming eight hundred thousand, currently, one of the, the lesser plot acreage-wise is currently has an eight, a four hundred thousand dollar assessed value.
And also the house, you know, it has a house.
Right.
Rental property, the front house.
So would it be more beneficial, because we're running out of time, is if you can contact that lawyer and you, the lawyer, her, all three of yous work together?
I think that's what he proposed.
You know, instead of, you know, you who working together and send it to him, but if you worked simultaneously, you know, that way it'd be a lot quicker, because by the, if you guys work together, then by the time you finish what you need and then get it to the lawyer, then the thirty first of July is going to come and go, you know? So I, I'm just concerned that, you know, that we get something to them, you know, and that everybody's reviewed it, and that, you know, it gets to him before.
It's a very, it's, it's a very simple thing, you know? We are talking about the land, describes in the land, cost, effect.
I'll make sure that we make the, and, and per, so in the past, for the last two months, when the, the town has reached out to MHP, it's actually been the town administrator doing that. So I would propose to, however we finalize this document, forward it to our town administrator, and she would submit it to MHP per what we've been doing.
As long as it's, yeah, as long as it gets there.
Yeah. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll be in touch with you, maybe, maybe tomorrow I'll reach out, and we can go from there. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right. Pretty short agenda. Let's see if we can-
No, some back, Jim? Okay, we can't, we can't do the executive session.
Why not?
Because-
That's right, there's only two people who-
That's right.
At the executive session here, so we'll have to put that one off.
Today? Is that an executive session?
Let's go through the other minutes.
Okay, the May sixteenth. Okay. Toby, I'm missing page four of the minutes for May sixth, the ones dated May sixteenth. I'm missing page four.
I think it just printed out that way. I, I've just got my odd pages, not the even ones.
Okay, well, there's, there's a change.
Oh. How did that happen?
Oh, but it was supposed to be double sided.
Okay.
Oh, God.
Okay, so we only got the odd pages.
You want me to reprint it?
Well, one on the table, like, for next meeting.
If you want to do that, then that's fine with me. Just table it for next meeting. The one on June twentieth, unless anybody has any corrections, I'm used-
You know, we have May, May sixteenth, the executive session.
We can't do that. It's only you and me.
Do you, do you want to take mine? I mean, had anybody reviewed them beforehand?
Yes, because there is a change to it.
For some reason, this one is, is correct. I don't know what I did.
This is the one that we had, is it, is it this, is this the meeting that we had, the one from over there in Oakdale? Is that the one?
So this one, it was where we had the two public hearings, the May sixteenth. Why don't we table it?
Table it.
We'll deal with it next time.
All right, fine. Motion to adjourn.
Well, hang on a second, hang on a second. What about the June twentieth minutes?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the June twentieth minutes.
As, as written.
As written. Is there a second?
And only Raju and I can vote on that.
Yeah.
So the three members abstain.
All right. I have no, no changes to that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three to zero. Mr. Benson abstaining. The June twentieth minutes are approved as written. All right, so that works. Next on the agenda is reorganization of the board.
So can we table it?
Do you want to table it, or you want to just?
Well, I mean, we got four people, we could-
We've already tabled it once.
Yeah, but we, we need a full board, right?
We do.
Do we?
Don't you think?
How about?
What are you going to do, what are you going to do if it is two on two? What are you going to do, two on two?
All right, well, let, let, then let's do this, okay? I nominate Chris Olson to remain as chair of the board.
Second that.
Any other comments?
No.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make, make a motion to, for Raj to remain as the vice chair.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nominate Mr. Benson to be the clerk.
Ah, I object to that.
We need, we, we have to have somebody, because the person that we have now never comes to the meetings.
So I nominate, I can nominate, right, or you have to wait for this?
No, there, there's already a motion on the, on the floor.
I have no second to it.
Is there a second?
Huh? Who's second today?
Nobody is.
There was no second.
There was no second.
Okay. So we can let it go?
Is, is there another motion?
I make a motion to nominate David Feimier for clerk.
I'll second that.
There is a second there. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we have it.
Okay, so can I just say one thing?
Toby is the secretary?
Toby. Now that we've rearranged the board, could you just make sure that Nancy gets a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay. But that's, that's the only thing.
Yeah, thanks, but I-
So still Toby is our secretary?
Ken?
I think so.
Okay, about Mr. Gabriel, we need to set up an executive session for that? Is that something that we should do now, or?
No, not now.
It's not an open meeting.
I know, but we can set up a date.
Well, only two of the members on that board are here.
Okay.
So we can't-
So we need to make sure that we reach out to Charlie?
Which, yes, which we're in the process of working through, yes. But, put it this way, so the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting is Thursday, August fifteenth. And so far, that seems to be a reasonable date to have said session. But we need to confirm that the doubtful board will, will be available, so.
So basically, we need to make sure that Nate and, and Charlie-
We'll take care of that. What else? Treasure or financial report.
Have you had a chance to reach out to Mr. Ali and his attorney about the, at the Asbelt for ninety, ninety two, ninety two North Main Street?
No, we wanted to do the cost certification first.
Okay. Because, in my opinion, until we get that, and VHB has a chance to review it,
Any else want to review?
That, we don't, that's the only way that we're going to release that money.
Yes. We will see.
If there's nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.